Uh, I mean, you can disclose it. I uh.
Let's not disclose it.
Let's not.
Should we not?
It doesn't have anything to do with this interview.
Right, okay. We can, we can abide by that. Hopefully I remember to cut that out of the podcast. So I'm gonna wave my hands so I remember.
We're rolling. We are rolling.
This is a real, real, real thing. Real, 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 real thing.
I've got plenty of time. I have nothing else going on today.
We're in the West neighborhood right now, 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 right now.
Well, that's weird.
Congratulations. Take two.
Screw up yesterday's podcast. That would be bad.
Every day you're doing a podcast.
Well, this is, this is a heavy week. Uh, we did Nick Core yesterday.
Exciting. How many council candidates have you done now?
We did Jeremy Schrader. No, we're doing Jeremy Schrader. We haven't done him yet. We did Elliot Payne. I like to think the Wedge Life Podcast catapulted Elliot Payne to his crushing victory over Kevin Reich and Ward one.
Sure, it was part of it.
Who else did we do? People are gonna be offended if I forget them. We did, uh, C Fletcher. I think that was the only two we did.
And the mayoral candidates?
We did the mayoral candidates. We did a BET candidate. Just one though.
I will confess, it was my favorite BET candidate, so.
Right. I, I should introduce the show because we've gone on a while and I haven't introduced the show. This is the Wedge Live Podcast. I'm John Edwards, your host. And my co-host today is Alyssa Shufman from Ward nine, who you might remember from our Fix Lindell episode. Welcome to the show.
Thank you for having me back, even though I still have not been to an Aldi.
Right. You haven't done that yet. We're gonna go together sometime, right? We're gonna go to an Aldi.
Yeah. I did have a realization later that it was relevant to the podcast because the Aldis are on like Lake Street and Lindell, which are terrible places to walk and bike.
Yeah. Are those in Ward nine?
Uh, the one on Lake Street is.
And so the one across Hiawatha is not?
I don't think so. There's like a tiny little strip of Ward nine that is across Hiawatha. Um, but it caught some.
The downtown Longfellow portion, right?
Is, is there a downtown Longfellow? Is that just Minnehaha?
That's, that's what they call it. I went to Open Streets on Lake Street and then it does that turn.
Yep.
On, uh, Hiawatha? No, it does the turn on Minnehaha, right?
Yeah.
And that, where, where that turn comes is the, uh, it's where they branded it downtown Longfellow. They have branding. At least they did that year.
I didn't know. A bad Ward nine resident. But yeah, that like tiny Minnehaha is the divider for a chunk of it. So there's like, like the former MPD third precinct site and Moon Palace Books and the former site of Peace Coffee, which is a new coffee spot I haven't been to yet. Like that is all in Ward nine. Uh, but then everything across the street from it is, is 12, I think. I'm bad at my geography. That's not Ward nine.
Or two, or two. Might be two. I think it's Cam. I'm always confused where Cam Gordon ends and Alondra Cano begins. Ward two versus Ward nine. So how do you feel about this election year so far? Are you stressed out? Are you stressed out about other things?
I mean, I am a little stressed out about the election year. I think I'm more stressed out about the fact that it like hit 118 degrees in the Arctic Circle yesterday. That's just not cool.
I didn't hear that. That sounds bad.
Yeah, it does sound real bad. Uh, not excited about those news. Um, but yeah, I think there was somebody who was processing. I think on Twitter, or maybe it was on your podcast. I don't know. I listen to a lot of your podcasts about how like the Minneapolis, it might have been Jason, the Minneapolis election cycle is like one year off of all of our big national elections. So we just have this like fatigue the year after, and I think that's feeling very real right about now.
Yeah. I think I mentioned this on another podcast because I listen to my podcast too. I have to because I edit them. And, uh, so 2017 was the post-Trump election and that had an impact on 2017. I might credit it with boosting progressive activity that year. And, uh, this is the, it's after a year of protests in Minneapolis about, uh, the police and killing George Floyd. So how does, how does that impact 2021?
I want to believe that it will impact 2021 a lot. That is.
Right. And the question for me is, do we actually enact a Department of Public Safety in Minneapolis, approve the Public Safety Charter Amendment and restructure public safety in Minneapolis? Or is the backlash in response to the idea of defund and abolish and the national crime wave, is there a backlash to that that causes us to retreat from that, what we started last year?
Yeah. I mean, that would be a very typical white people pattern. Uh, not that all of the players in this instance are white, um, but it would be a very typical white people pattern to say, we want to do something and then, uh, when it gets hard to just say that the status quo is good enough.
And what is the mood in Ward nine, do you think?
Well, it's, I think it's pretty mixed, right? Um, I'm still on a number of those. I see like a fair amount of my neighbors, right? Because I walk and bike everywhere. So I am just like out in the neighborhood. Um, and then, you know, we also have like a block text chain and a neighborhood text chain and things like that. Um, and so just from conversations with folks and also those spaces, I think a lot of folks are, um, you know, work like, we're still all really exhausted from the pandemic. Like I know many people are vaccinated and many people are sort of going back to normal and put in air quotes. Um, but I think people are like very exhausted. The eviction moratorium, uh, looks like it's about to end in a couple of days. Um, and so there's a lot of worry about people suddenly being evicted. Um, and I think people are just tired, you know, like overall tired of the way that we, we've had a lot of conversation about how do we deliver and make the world a better place? And we're not like, we're not delivering on that yet. Um, and I think people are very tired of that.
Yeah. Basically had a year-long detour, uh, away from a lot of things.
I will say it's like, you know, the conversations we are having in my neighborhood are very different than from a couple of years ago. Um, you know, like our block has been organized, the block that I live on has been organizing for a number of years and, you know, and there would be like a lot of conversations that folks would have where they would really struggle with seeing a way out of a situation that didn't involve calling 911 and having the cops come. Um, and folks are really starting to move beyond that, um, although it's not, we're not totally there in terms of people having the toolkit to do that. Um, but it is encouraging to see folks shifting some of their thinking around how do we solve problems within our neighborhood and take care of each other.
Yeah. I think our guest is coming.
He just left. Dump ship. Goodbye. Uh, oh, but he's still typing in the chat, it says. So that's a mystery for the ages.
I still see the frozen video. Now, now I see offline.
Yeah. Jason says, uh, he could not hear anything and his laptop is not working.
Okay. Well, that, that makes the decision to reschedule much easier, I guess. It's not us. It's your laptop.
I love that you're just recording all of, all of this.
I mean, this, this, this could, this disaster could turn into an episode. John, Alyssa. Self, which are podcasts.
Talk about Ward nine. Well, I'm sure we could find things to talk about that are not Ward nine.
Yeah. I can play Lisa Goodman's sound effects.
I've got plenty of time. I have nothing else going on today.
I laugh at that every single time.
Well, you'll, you'll enjoy the Nick Core episode because we, the reason I have that loaded is because, uh, he's in Ward seven and Lisa Goodman's in Ward seven. And I had to get a last minute co-host yesterday because Peggy Sue, your idol, the golden child, everyone thinks she's fabulous. She screwed up her calendar. She screwed up her calendar, had to cancel on me. So I'm scrambling for a last minute co-host. Not all, not everything everyone thinks she is.
You can still be fabulous and not be good at calendars. Those aren't mutually exclusive.
Okay.
Jason is going to try to sub in a different laptop. Uh, I reminded him to ask for headphones.
Yeah, you would, you would think everyone has some of those Apple headphones laying around.
I don't, but I don't have an iPhone and I get a lot of grief about it.
Yeah, neither do I, but I just thought everyone else did. You know what irritates me? Here's, here's a thing we can use to stretch the conversation. When people on iPhones like your text message and it sends back your entire text message to you, why, why?
There's no reason. You know who else? It's that everyone on iPhones. And I'm like, I'm always the one like Android user in the iPhone text message. And they're like, this only happens because you're here. It's your fault.
Oh, do they get it too?
Yeah, they get it too. So if you have just a group of iPhone users, it like, it's just a little emoji reaction under the message. But when you add a non-Iphone user to a group text, uh, then it does that to everyone.
Do you think that would be incentive to stop doing it? Just stop liking my text messages. Don't love them. Don't laugh at them.
I get a lot of dislike and there's also a thing called emphasized, which I, uh, had to ask someone about last weekend because I was like, what does that mean though? Why are you emphasize?
I, I assume it's like the 100 emoji.
It is.
Like I'm with you. I'm with you.
I think it is an exclamation point and a question mark together, which is not what I would have guessed.
It's not emphasis. That's, uh, Bill Wilderman, I think.
Yeah, that seems closer to accurate.
Do you have any pet peeves? You want to be the Andy Rooney of the, uh, Wedge Life Pod? Do you know who Andy Rooney is?
I was not gonna tell you I didn't, but since you asked, no, I don't really.
He was the old guy on 60 Minutes. I don't know when he was last on 60 Minutes, but he would complain about stuff at the end of the 60 Minutes episode.
I don't know anything offhand that mystifies Americans more than the cotton they put in pill bottles. Why do they do it?
I can safely say I do not aspire to be Andy Rooney.
Okay. But do you have pet peeves? Things you'd like to complain about?
Do I like to complain about? Uh, I mean, very on brand for me, cars parked in bike lanes.
Yeah. Where, where does that happen to you the most? Just everywhere?
I mean, a little bit of everywhere. Um, actually the thing I do like to complain about the most is people in cars driving on the Midtown Greenway. That is the thing I complain about the most. Uh, that is my biggest pet peeve.
Why do they do it?
What do you think causes that? People don't do it on purpose, do they?
Well, there's like, I mean, some people do, right? There's maintenance trucks that need to get down there a lot of the time.
Yeah.
Uh, there are Hennepin County sheriffs and MPD who drive down there. No, just why? No. Um, and they definitely do it at a like very lurking pace. It's very creepy. And then there are like the occasional people who just like take a wrong turn and then like go.
Yeah, I feel bad for people sometimes because I wouldn't want that to be me stuck on the greenway. Being afraid a biker is gonna attack you or driving in their space. I imagine those people are very fearful when they get stuck, uh, like between a wall and a, like an overhang. How do I turn around? Where do I go?
I don't think I've ever seen anybody get stuck, but I live by the Seepro site, um, which is like those two, it's that kind of parky area between 10th and 11th near the Midtown Greenway where there's like two trails that come together and then lead down to the greenway. And people tend to turn on there and then they tend to turn off. I think it's fifth over by like a couple of the, there's like a couple of schools over there. Um, where the greenway is at grade level. So they just like drive it from there to there and then get off.
I think a lot of people get on in Uptown at the, uh, at the mall, the mall area where it's at, at the street level. It's a bad spot for it too. People need to pay attention.
I think part of that is, right? It's like, it is a novel thing that we have this dedicated bike and pedestrian pathway. And so people aren't expecting it. And that's like actually part of the problem is if we had those kinds of pathways all over the place, people would know to look out for them, but because we don't, they don't.
People think it's a cozy, like European street. One of those really narrow, cozy, squeezed in European streets.
There's a technical term for that. It's called a woo nerf.
Oh, is that what we call it?
I mean, that's not what I call it, but other people call it that.
I think we've moved away from that. It's not accessible language, right?
Yeah. And also just like, like twiddle, it sounds made up.
Yeah. What do you think of the 29th Street woo nerf?
In Uptown?
Street on 29th. Yeah. What do you think about that?
You know, I haven't been over there lately. I live right off 29th over here in Midtown. And so I immediately was thinking about, uh, that 29th. Um, you know, I think there's like, there are always more improvements to be made. Um, and the fact that we are willing to try it is a, is a good start, but which is kind of a non-committal answer, but I haven't seen it recently.
I don't think it functions like a shared street because the way people whip off Lindell Avenue headed south, they'll just turn right off Lindell. I don't feel very comfortable walking in that street. It's a nice street, but I wouldn't call it a shared street.
Yeah. I really wish we had a lot more diverters. Of course, I'm like just talking transportation stuff now. Um, but those, I mean, people put up a lot of resistance to those, but I think they're really great because they just, right? Like the function of a diverter, I think it can look a lot of different ways is to divert traffic. And so people don't use specific streets as throughways, right? Like you can get on it and you can go three or four blocks or whatever it is. And then there's a diverter and you have to get off of it. And so it really encourages people not to think of streets as throughways.
Here, here's a transportation story. So the 35W reconstruction is coming to a close, right? They're reopening that thing. They're, they're done, right?
Sure. I don't follow highway reconstruction terribly much.
Well, it's kind of relevant because you will often hear, well, we can't, we can't make this change until they open the interstate back up, until that's done. All of your changes must wait until the interstate is finished, right? Do you hear that a lot?
I've heard it some. I would, but.
Well, pretend you, pretend for the sake of this podcast that you hear it all the time. And so, so I'm wondering now that like it's wrapping up, do we get to do the good things? Like what's the next excuse? Because I, I'm guessing we can't fit, we still can't fix Lindell Avenue. We still won't be able to fix Hennepin Avenue. Only the, even though the excuse we had for not doing those things is, it's going away soon.
Yeah. I mean, I think that is, unless we push on it, that is probably likely to be true, given, you know, there's this culture of wanting to improve things up to the point that it would make things inconvenient for people driving. And then we sort of like stop making improvements. And that's like what's normal now, right? Like that is the status quo. And so when we think about some of the missed opportunities of the pandemic, right? Where like Minneapolis, Hennepin County, Min Dot didn't like take a serious look at, okay, we have this reduction in people driving. What can we do to keep that, right? Like that, that could have been a desirable thing that we said we wanted to like shepherd and, and be the direction we wanted to move in. But there was this sense that like, oh, this is temporary and like it is only temporary because you allowed it to be temporary, right? Like it could have, it could have been permanent. Um, and so I think that like people are always sort of designing for this idea of what's normal, uh, even as we are acknowledging that like what is normal has to radically shift. And I think that, that like, there's obviously like a tension and a conflict there that we haven't figured out how to get a, you know, get folks to move past.
And I'm, I don't know, I'm not a, I'm not in the biz like you are, but it, it occurs to me, maybe I've read a blog post on this, but people will drive and fill up the space that you give them, right? Like you make a super wide street with six lanes, they'll fill up that space. That space will be filled. And so we, we've had a lessening of demand for, oh, hey, Jason.
Hey, can y'all hear me, hear me better?
It's so much better.
Okay, good. My, uh, someone in my campaign just brought me a laptop, so kind of embarrassed.
Well, I mean, you sound like a bona fide city council candidate now. I'm proud of you. I'm so glad to have you.
No, thank you all for allowing me to be here. I really appreciate it. I'm very excited to be here, so.
Okay. Let me redo my introduction.
Yes.
So we are joined by Jason Chavez, who is a city council candidate in Ward nine, who is coming off his 69% endorsement victory at the Ward nine convention. Welcome to the show, Jason.
Yeah. Thank you for having me here today.
Okay, let's talk about what neighborhood you live in and tell me the story of why and how you came to live there.
Yeah. So I currently live and reside in the central neighborhood. So, um, I, I'm not gonna give my address actually, uh, but I was born and raised in the East Phillips neighborhood. So my parents are immigrants from Mexico, from the city of Puebla in a small village called Mazaco. And they escaped violence and poverty and made their home in Ward nine, which was, I was, ended up being born and raised, obviously, along with my brother and a whole bunch of other relatives that I grew up with here. So that's how my family made their way here and how we've called this our own home ever since. And as you all know, uh, Ward nine has the biggest Latinx community in the entire state and a big undocumented population, probably the biggest one in the entire state. Um, and the Spanish language is used to survive here in Ward nine. So being able to like walk all over Lake Street is very critical to our immigrant and undocumented Latinx residents here, uh, to make sure that they can at least feel like they're at home without having to be back in their home, um, because this is their new home, right? So this is a really important place to my heart. It's a place that was, I went to middle school, elementary school, went to high school on Lake Street. And it's just a place that I care a lot about. And, uh, and I think you asked, you say why I'm running or just why I live here basically?
No, just like what brought you to your current place of residence? And I think you've covered that pretty well. And so I think you mentioned on your website about, or maybe I read it in mempost about how making government, city government accessible to people in the Ward nine community. Can you talk about, uh, some difficulties people experience and how you would fix that as city council member?
Yeah. So I think it starts by having someone that knows that that's an issue to begin with. Uh, I, I think we'll probably dive into this. I don't know how much time we have, but uh, I want to share a little story before I get into why that's important to me. Uh, so growing up, obviously it was in the East Phillips neighborhood. We all, my family and I owned a home. I didn't, but my family did. My parents did. And in this home, we had a backyard where we would plant like vegetables and our cute little apple tree. It was just a small apple tree that we would eat from. And this other tree that had a little berries, but in the same apple tree where we were eating from it for years, uh, city hall or people in city coun, not city council, just people in city hall sent us a letter in English and they told us that our soil was contaminated and the, 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 the things we've been putting into our body was dangerous. And they told us in a letter, like I said, in English, a language that my parents don't understand. And like since then, I realized that like, uh, the destruction that, that comes with not understanding that that letter, one, not everybody can read. And two, like, English is not everyone's first language. And three, I was young. I didn't know what these big words of contamination and things meant at a young age. So I didn't know how to explain to my parents that what we've been doing for years and what we've been playing on the playground for years was destroying our bodies. And like moving forward now, I know my dad is sick. I sometimes feel sick. I don't know if I can relate it to the soil, but I do know that it ties into that. And especially depressing knowing that the East Phillips neighborhood where this is happening right now is a community that is majority people of color and also has a big undocumented community. So what that means is that people that are putting these toxins into their body can't go get healthcare. And I know that's not a city issue. Uh, that's more like a state issue, federal issue when it comes to healthcare, but it's still something that we need to recognize and take action because a lot of people that are being impacted by environmental racism here can't even have access to healthcare or don't even have the ability to go see a doctor to get checked up on. So like for me, just from a young age, knowing that my family was being left out of like, just because things weren't being made accessible or in a different language, knew that it's really important to me. But something that doesn't happen is people assume that we can just make town halls or send a big email blast and that's enough. But what happens is a lot of like immigrants and people of color or black, brown indigenous people, what they need is someone there and someone in their backyard and meet them where they're at. And that means different things for different communities. But I know for my community, in order to actually reach out to us, you need to meet them in their backyard. Meet them where they're at because a lot of factors turn into whether it's the lack of transportation options, the lack of being able to go to city hall or not being comfortable going into a government building that is, has made it, been inaccessible for, for centuries. So, uh, that's the reason why it's on my website. Uh, but I also care about it. And I know that one thing is for me is like always meeting people where they're at. And that's something that's been missing in the Ward nine office for years. We aren't meeting people where they're at, but we're also not even responding to people or even communicating what we believe in and how we're gonna move forward with our community here in the ninth ward.
So you would make that contrast with the incumbent Alondra Cano? Okay. Uh, Alyssa, do you have any Ward nine specific questions? I know you live there. You must have concerns.
I have lots of Ward nine specific questions, but I mean, one thing that's coming up for me right away, uh, since you mentioned the history of pollution in East Phillips, right? And the arsenic contamination zone, right? Like that was something that I didn't know about until I moved to this neighborhood about a decade ago and then was like, oh, I have to, what? I have to like get the soil tested to like put a tomato plant outside of my apartment? Okay. Um, this is terrible. Um, but I'm curious how, what your thoughts are on what we, a lot of us know as the Roof Depot site, what the city is now calling the Hiawatha Maintenance Expansion Facility. Um, and, uh, a lot of the community organizing efforts that have been happening around pushing that site to be something different. It sounds like there is potentially a decision point with city council sometime this August. So I'm just curious what you think about what the future of that site and what that should look like.
Yeah. So a lot of feelings about that right now. So I was a part of the South Side, well, I'm a part of the South Side Green Zone Council. The city directed like some green zones in the North Side and the South Side of Minneapolis, uh, which basically made sure that there was two councils that would like direct the city council with advice on how to move forward. One of the things that we've been asking for, for years was, uh, the East Phillips indoor urban farm project. And what's been happening is that the city council was ignoring us. And in fact, it didn't listen to the advice that we gave them. Uh, this council, as in the South Side Green Zone Council that I'm a part of, is made up of people from Little Earth, people from the East Phillips neighborhood, people from Ward six, because they have a, a, a green zone council over there. And people from obviously Ward nine and that have been impacted by environmental racism and know a lot of the, the things that we can solve with the community to make sure that the pollution that is killing our neighbors here in the East Phillips neighborhood stops. And what happens is we made this council that the city council did to advise the city council, but yet has no power to actually do anything. And it's just been frustrating because we've been supporting the, the Urban Farm Project for years and we were being, we're being ignored. Uh, moving forward now, I know the community here in the ninth ward has been working on this alongside people here for a long time to figure out what we're gonna do. So one thing that I want to do is work with the people in the ninth ward, the people of the Little Earth, uh, to make sure that we're actually doing what we need to do to make sure that it's successful. Whether it's like job training opportunities, maybe some small businesses that are run to make sure that that money goes back into the community. Obviously some income-based housing and making sure that we actually have like food that we're, we're planting to make sure that it can go back into the community are some of the things that the people here are talking about. Um, and obviously I'm not gonna be the one that's making the decision. I am very serious when our campaign is a community-led, community-centered campaign that those most impacted by policy are the ones that are gonna be driving the force for how we're gonna envision the urban farm project. And that's what I've been hearing and I'm gonna continue hearing from the people that have been doing this work for a while on how we're gonna move forward. But those are just some of the ideas. I think it's a really cool idea. I think the fact that the city was trying to put more parking and create more pollution into a neighborhood that is already dying from cancer and asthma, uh, and has been ignoring that for a long time is very disheartening. And I'm very hopeful that moving forward, we can do things differently to actually take care of a neighborhood that has been increasingly disinvested from. And it's a neighborhood I was born and raised in too, so it's very close to my heart.
Say, that's your neighborhood.
So I'm curious, uh, in the course of the campaign, you're talking to a lot of voters, you're calling them on the phone, you're door knocking. You, you're hearing from people a lot, and I'm wondering if there's an issue where you've learned over the course of these conversations with residents. Maybe I need to go back and rethink either my position or how you're talking about it. Something you've had to adjust to the community's response to an issue.
Yeah, um, I think so on the phone, there's two big topics that always hit, uh, the most and it's public safety and, um, housing. So I wouldn't say that there's been much of a necessary change. I would say that when it comes to public safety, the conversation, conversation is always going to be shifting. And right now, I'm very clear in my position, right? Like, I do believe that we need to move the resources from MPD back into our community and be really serious about violence prevention to ensure that our communities are actually safe, along with making sure that MPD is not working with Immigration Customs Enforcement and stops the killing of our black, brown and indigenous people. The, the, the concern right now with a lot of people is that right now, the police is not doing its job and it continues to create harm into our community. And then there's another conversation where people do not feel safe in our ward. But people also understand, the number one thing that people understand is that we know that right now, we have a police department that isn't working, that fundamentally, we know cannot be reformed and cannot be repaired, and we need to try something different. And on the phone, it's actually been incredibly, incredibly like resonating with people because people understand that what we have right now isn't working and people just want to feel safe by trying something different. I do support the new Department of Public Safety, the Yes for Minneapolis petition, uh, that would create the new Department of Public Safety that will allow us to create different solutions to public safety. And reclaim what that actually means to make sure we can keep our community safe. And that's going to continue changing. Right now, we have a lot of community groups that have lost trust with the people here in the Ninth Ward and other wards as well. And I want to make sure that that's something that I've been talking about is making sure we do like some rapid response teams on Lake Street and in Ninth Ward, but knowing that right now, there's a lot of trust that is broken with those groups in our, in our ward. That is something that I'm continuously trying to work with right now to figure out what is the night, what is the path forward with that? And what is the path forward for prevention in the Ninth Ward? And that's something that's always going to be changing, but as long as we're working with the people on the ground and the people that are most impacted by violence or the, the violence done by MPD, that's the only way we're going to move forward. And that's something that's always gonna, always going to be having to do something different with that.
Yeah, I've noticed the rhetoric has changed a little. It's gone from sort of a general anti-police sentiment, which they have earned, to basically anti-government sentiment at some of the, the marches and protests, especially when I was in Uptown recently, I noticed. And it has some to do with the mayor kind of, uh, paying, paying this group agape to, to take the fall, basically, for his decision to clear George Floyd Square. So how do you think that affects what, what I imagine you'd like to do if you get elected to city council, which is create this alternative system, which will be government? We need people to trust the government to handle public safety. So what is your approach to rebuilding that trust?
Yeah, so it's, it's a complicated thing right now. And, and the good, I'm very happy you asked a proud question to that because it fits into this narrative. And right now, I think the number one issue is that these groups are, are often used as, not want to say tokens, often used as a pawn for people that are directing them to do a different task in community or working closely with the group that has created harm in our ward. So the fact that these groups work really close with MPD already creates a lot of distrust in people in the community right now. And what we need to do before we build trust with MPD is build trust with the community. So these groups should not be working like as close as they do with MPD and instead should actually be more of like, I think we could figure out a way that we can make them city staff without having to be in the ears of people that continue to inflict harm in our, in our, in our ward as, as MPD has in the past and will continue to do so. And I think what we need to do is ensure that these groups are more independent and don't actually work closely with them and build that actual trust, uh, instead of building this reputation for not actually helping solve the issues, but bringing more harm into the, into the ward.
So just watching Alondra Kano over this, this last term, it feels like she, she came out really strong with some very, uh, with the, basically had the most pro abolish MPD language that you heard coming from the city council. She has backed off of that a little, I guess, and I, I imagine it's at least partly the result of some real community sentiment in Ward Nine, either from residents or businesses. People, people want to be safe. I remember a couple of weeks ago, there were two nights in a row and I live on a fairly sleepy street in the wedge where people were shooting off guns on my block. I was, it was scary. It was frustrating. I was angry. And so I understand those emotions. So how do you talk to people about the Public Safety Charter Amendment and creating this new department? And the idea of taking some money away from MPD? How do you talk to people who are skeptical of that? And how that can address their immediate concerns, their immediate desire? I want to feel safe right now. You know, I want, when I call 911, I want someone to show up to, to address the violence. How do you talk to those people?
Yeah, so I think, I, I want to talk about a little story before we, we get into that question. I might ask you to repeat it again, but I'm really good friends with the person that owns a Poblanita. They own a Mexican restaurant, Mexican grocery store, and they just sell really good food. And they had, they like, uh, they had the, I had a, the DFL endorsement party, uh, like two weeks ago and they had, they added their food there, right? But I want, one, one thing about them is that someone broke into their business, I would say, maybe this was like in February, and they broke in the business and ran into the bathroom and locked themselves up. And the owner of the business heard the bathroom sink just fall down and was really scared, obviously, right? He, he didn't feel safe, but he knew he didn't want to call the police because he didn't know what was happening. But he also knew that the person was not moving anymore, so he thought something happened to the person. In that situation, he wishes the city was more responsive or providing resources of who they can call. And granted, I know things have changed now, this was in February, of who they can call for help. And he ended up calling MPD and luckily, MPD was able to not like do any harm and actually helped the individual. He was overdosing and he could have died and they busted down the person's door, the, the restaurant's door. And my friend told me, the owner, uh, that he just wishes the city was doing something better in terms of like a different response, because he didn't want to call the police. He knew the police didn't have the answers to help this person if they were overdosed or if they were just struggling, but he knew he needed to call somebody because either he was going to have someone dead or he might end up getting hurt. And someone was locked in their bathroom with a whole bunch of noise happening. And that, that's really important for me. I think right now fundamentally, when I'm on the phones, everyone says they know that MPD needs to change. Some people want to completely divest from MPD, right? And some people say they just want to reform MPD, which oftentimes just means some things that we've done in the past and isn't working. And right now, we need to really take seriously when people do have that fear of not being safe in their home. Because if we don't take that seriously, we're not going to be able to move that conversation. And I think one thing we need to know right now is that even when we do have police, people are still being shot. Even when we do have police, people are still being hurt. And if we don't get to the root cause of violence, we're never actually going to resolve community conflicts or community violence that's happening, uh, within people. And I think that resonates with a lot of people because oftentimes I get, like, I talk to people that say, I've been on the phone with MPD for a while and they showed up two hours later or one hour later, or they told me they can't really respond to that because it's not something of a priority. So what is their actual job or what are they actually doing? And people understand that we need to do something different. We also need to figure out ways that will reduce violence and people know that, uh, if people have access to housing, right? If we actually do this complete housing bill of rights, that's actually going to invest and stop criminalizing people that are unhoused. We know that we can actually get to the root cause of violence and help prevent it. We know if we fight beyond that $15 minimum wage, because that $15 minimum wage is not enough. And we know we need people in city hall that are willing to fight beyond that, that people are actually going to have the money and a job that's actually going to help them feed their family and they're not going to have to resort to other desperation needs. If we get to those type of issues at first and, and fight those off, I think we can actually resolve a lot of the things that are happening here in the Ninth Ward across the city. And honestly, it isn't just the city of Minneapolis. It is happening all over the entire United States. And that, that resonates with a lot of people. I think it's because it's true, right? We know that that helps reduce the violence in our communities and we know that MPD isn't actually responding to the needs that people need help with.
Alyssa, I'm handing the next series of questions to you.
Great, I was just about to interrupt and I appreciate not having to. Um, yeah, uh, I have so many thoughts about all of that, uh, lots of really great stuff in there. I think, you know, one thing that comes to mind immediately is given a lot of what you just said, I'm curious what you think we should be doing with the site of the former Third Precinct, right? So that's like the very, very corner edge of Ward Nine, I suspect, would we redistrict next year? It might get redistricted out. But yeah, just like, given some of the vision that you're bringing forward and what you're hearing from folks and how you're thinking about, you know, really getting at root causes of, um, what we, like violence and what we term crime.
Yeah.
Like, what do you think that space should look like? That's, that's like in your, that would be in your ward.
Yeah, so three things. I'll start off by saying what it should not look like, what I'm thinking, and then ultimately what the community needs. So the first thing, I do not want to bring the police department back into the Ninth Ward with that their precinct. So that precinct should forever just be back and back to the people of the Ninth Ward. And what do I mean by that is that we're running a community-led, community-centered campaign, like I mentioned earlier. So I'm going to continue having conversations with the people of the Ninth Ward, uh, to continue figuring out what people actually need and want. Some of the conversations I've been having with people, it's housing. People want income-based housing there. People want to make sure we have some options for youth employment. I want to work really hard at city council to expand the step-up program, which employs youth starting at the age of 14. And this program, uh, would essentially, I, I would do some tweaks to it, right? Because I think it needs to be improved. But essentially, my hope is to have this program, uh, employ people here in the Ninth Ward at a young age and provide them resources. So when they get older, they already have a good experience in the workforce, so they have a good paying job. As, as we're doing this, we're also going to be fighting beyond that $15, $15 minimum wage, right? So that's just some of the things that I would want to do, but I know from people that I've been speaking to, they just want like a workforce place, they want housing, um, some like green house stuff. But, um, that's still to be explored, uh, and I will continue figuring that out once we have more conversations with people. But I'll make it clear, I do not believe, uh, we should have the precinct back here and I'll fight really hard to make sure that doesn't happen.
Yeah, one of the things that you noted in your response and have said a couple of times now, and I'm curious, is this idea of community-led and community-centered, right? And I think I have seen, um, you know, especially it happens in the, in the field that I'm familiar with, transportation, but I imagine it happens in really a lot of other spaces as well, is this, this idea of who community is, is like really amorphous. And it gets, like, people use the word community to mean something very specific, but paint it as something really broad. And so I'm curious if you could sort of define what like community means to you and your campaign? Because that is a word that like a lot of people use very, very differently.
Yeah, for sure. And I love that. I get asked that a lot, so I really appreciate this question. So for me, I oftentimes end it with those most impacted by policy, right? And I know that's a little broad as well, but in specific topics, there's community groups that are more impacted by policy than others. And I believe that those people should be the people I should be leading alongside with and I should be working with to make sure we develop what works for them. Uh, because ultimately, if it works for them, the goal is that it will work for everyone. Uh, when we work to try to figure out like the DACA issue, right? There's undocumented immigrants in our ward. They're either East African or Latinx. And I'll be working with them to make sure we pass that DACA fund, right? And anybody else is welcome to help along that side, but I know they know the issue more, more to their heart than I do. And I want to make sure that their voices are being respected. When it comes to the East Phillips Indoor Urban Farm Project, we know that we're on indigenous stolen land. And the landbag movement, we know that we need to lead beside and with the indigenous people of the Ninth Ward to make sure we know that when we're fighting for this land to transform it, we're working with them to make sure we're doing it right. And based on what they need to make sure that we live a healthier life and know that we can end the pollution or start getting to a place where we can end the pollution that is hurting them, creating heart problems, cancer and asthma. So for me, it means like those most impacted are closest to the issues that we're fighting against. And I know that's also kind of broad, but it depends by topic. If y'all ever wonder, just ask you a specific topic and I'll tell you who I'm working with, uh, to make sure we can get that accomplished. And I, and I, and I like that question a lot because oftentimes people use that as a brush to be like, well, everyone, you know? But, but I want to be really like blunt and say it's the people that are really impacted by, by the decisions that we're going to make because ultimately, they're the ones that are going to face the consequences. My family faced those consequences and the people around me faced those consequences. And I want to make sure that we're hearing from those people directly, uh, to make sure we're doing things right.
Jason, I think you're going to love this next question. Let's talk about the police contract with the Police Federation of Minneapolis. On your website, you say you will reduce the power of the Police Officers Federation of Minneapolis through strategic contract negotiations. And I'm really curious what that strategy would be.
Yeah. So, so one thing, obviously, that's going to be a really complicated situation. And that's going to, uh, mean that we have to work across government. I worked at the Minnesota House of Representatives and I worked for two state representatives and have been working there for three years now and been working on policy and know that a lot of the things that we need to do, need to change at the state level. And part of, part of the work I want to do is bring my, my work from the state legislature, bring it to city hall and work across government to make sure that if we can't do something with the unions, we work with our legislators to help change that. Also, I know that also means flipping some senate seats and know that it's going to take a lot of work to do that, but I'm very hopeful that after the city council election, we can actually create that change that will allow us to put that pressure, to flip some seats and then put the pressure on Democrats, because even Democrats are going to be a little, how do I say nicely? A little sloppy when it comes to this kind of work to actually stand up for our black and indigenous people here. So I would just say, bringing my experience across government to city hall, which is something that is desperately needed. I don't think, uh, we do that really well. When it comes to a lot of crises, we oftentimes just fingerpoint instead of bringing all the people that can do the changes together. So I think that's how I would just start off.
I'm glad you mentioned flipping senate seats because I thought you were going to say you had Paul Gazalka's phone number.
I have it on speed dial.
Our listeners are smarter than that. They would not have believed that answer.
Yeah.
Uh, Alyssa, do you have a transportation question? I know you're really good on transportation.
Uh, what gave you that clue? No, it's, uh, yeah, it's what I spend most of my time thinking about. So, you know, one of the things I'm curious about, right? We've mentioned before, Minneapolis has this new and really great transportation action plan that says we're going to shift three out of every five trips to walking biking transit, right? And one of the dynamics that we've seen in the past and actually in the present day as well, uh, with Hennepin Avenue South is that strong acquisition to, uh, a really good project for walking biking and transit in a ward can get totally stalled out because the council member in the ward doesn't support it. So, um, you know, I'm curious how you think that you would, uh, sort of apply your lens of community-based decision-making, right? When we have, for example, uh, the B line, Bus Rapid Transit line on, uh, Metro Transit is funded, that will go in on Lake Street. There's obviously going to be an impact on businesses, um, you know, in the short term, both with, uh, uh, construction, because that happens with every street project, and then also in a longer-term way, really bringing high-quality, reliable transit to the corridor and like boosting business, right? But like sort of getting through that pinch point can be really challenging. So I'm curious, you know, how would you show up for those kinds of conversations? And, you know, thinking also about like, right now, one of the things up for consideration on Lake Street is a dedicated bus lane. up for consideration on Lake Street is a dedicated bus lane. Right now, Lake Street is a four-lane, I'll be a little technical for a hot second. Lake Street is a four-lane undivided road, which means that like there's two lanes going each direction, there's no median in the middle or anything like that. And that's the most dangerous type of street we have in Minneapolis for people walking and biking and also, uh, driving. So, um, yeah, I I just like, you know, knowing that there's that sort of very personality-driven nature of decision-making, uh, in terms of how council members relate to public works, decision-making, um, would love to hear from you on like your overall transportation priorities, but like the Lake Street example would be a great one to dive in on, if you.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, I ca- I have a couple ideas and I'll try to like make it make sense, but, uh, so like growing up, for me, transportation was the easiest thing, uh, in terms of, sorry, not transportation. Walking and the bus was the easiest way for me and my family to get around. So it was the way we would go to our grocery stores, the way we would get to Lake Street taking the twenty-one, uh, with other buses, right, to get to Lake Street first, or just in general, the way we got to school. And it was just this, the the safest and cheapest way to get around. And I know for a lot of, uh, our communities of color, uh, that's one of the easiest ways and more less expensive ways to get around, because obviously car repairs and having a car costs a lot of money. So that's one thing I I really, really wanna work on as a city council member, because I know, uh, right now, walking isn't accessible. I believe that, uh, walking is like one of the most dangerous modes of transportation where people die the most, and I believe, but doing bicycle, bicycling is next, right? So making sure that not only Lake Street, but entire ninth ward is more safe for pedestrians and making sure it's more safe for people that that bike ride, especially making sure that we fix our roads here, because a lot of people that I've been talking to on the phones do have disabilities and can't get across our ward as safely as they would like to. And there's a lot of like sidewalks that are just like deteriorating and are not safe to get around. And that's also another issue we need to focus on. So my my focus would be a lot on pedestrians in terms of like people that are walking to get around our ward and also people that want to make sure that they wanna be, they they are safe when they're they're using their bicycle to get around. And also in our ward, like I mentioned earlier, especially the East Phillips neighborhood and part of Ward six, uh, we know that cars are causing a lot of pollution into our ward. So trying to minimize that as much as we, as much as we can is gonna be really critical for me, uh, in my time at City Council. Uh, because I know that the people of East Phillips, like I mentioned earlier, and I will continue mentioning it, cause I want people to know what's happening. People are having a lot of heart problems, asthma and cancer in our ward, because the continuous amount of cars that come into our ward and cause pollution along with other factors. And making sure that we actually make it easier for other communities to have access to transportation. Uh, one thing I really wanna work on for transportation, I know you need to work on it with the Metropolitan Council to make sure that we have fair free transit. But we can work out a program for like low-income people, uh, to provide bus carts, and I think we've done it way back in the past. We can provide bus carts for people of Minneapolis, uh, and figure out how we can make that as accessible as possible, cause I wanna make sure it gets to people that otherwise wouldn't know how to access these bus carts, but making sure that we can do this program where people can actually start using the bus and not have to worry how much it costs, cause it also costs money, and oftentimes people don't know how to pay for that and they don't have the means to do that. So making sure we do that program here in the city would be really critical for me to encourage bus rides, but also expanding it to different people. I know my father right now struggles to walk and can't be walking an extra three blocks, four blocks, cause he can literally get hurt, uh, to go to his bus stop, so he has to ride a car. But I also know that like that car costs a lot of money for all the damages that happen to it and all that gas he has to use to get to work. And a number one thing that happens in our communities right now is that sometimes people have to choose between either taking that bus for three to four hours to work, obviously the total amount in the morning and afternoon, or coming home to their kids and making sure that they can take care of them and not have a babysitter for them. And that also is another another problem. So making sure we expand and make all this transportation as easy, as accessible and, uh, in every single person's home, right? Or or apartment or place they live in, making sure that it gets to everybody. So I would say those are my things right now, that are my priorities, if that makes sense.
Yeah, those are good big picture priorities and I really appreciate you, uh, I think this is one of, uh, many people's pet peeves is sort of knowing, like the Metropolitan Council i- is like administers transit, right? Like there's a limited amount of control that you have, and so doing, knowing, you know, where your leverage points are within your role and where you're gonna need to partner with the Metropolitan Council, um, to push that forward is very exciting. One thing that came up for me as you were talking is I'm curious how you feel about, um, municipal sidewalk shoveling. So that's been something that a lot of advocates have been pushing for, I see two thumbs up. Um, advocates have been pushing for for a while and sort of say, we have, you know, we have these policies that we should put people walking and biking and taking transit above people driving and, you know, one of the policies explicitly says we should do that with our maintenance and yet we plow all of our streets. And, you know, some of our bike lanes, but we don't plow any of our sidewalks, um, so.
Yes, I one hundred percent support that and obviously I had to learn a lot about it. Uh, because I had the privilege of being able to go on a sidewalk and walk and not have to think about what that meant. And I've been meeting with actually a lot of people, uh, cause when I, I'll mention this again, it's a, we're having a community-led, community-centered campaign, right? And we're talking to a lot of people in the ninth ward about disability justice. So a lot of people, and not people that just know have knowledge about it, but people that are experiencing the lack of disability justice in our ward. And that's one thing they're telling me is that our sidewalks are not walkable. And during the winter, it's even more hazardous and not walkable. And one solution to that, and it won't solve everything, is that municipally, mu- municipal shoveling program. And I think that's something that we need to start doing immediately, something I would explore obviously and wanna wanna help push. And, uh, would obviously need to go beyond that. Uh, but yeah, that's something really important, uh, and I support, so.
Okay, I'm gonna try to burn through this next series of questions, cause we have to get Jason going at, so, five forty. He's got another place to be. Okay, I'm sorry I have all the the mean questions, but, uh, here's another thing from your website I I'm legitimately curious about. It mentions taxing the rich, place a tax on the wealthiest corporations in Minneapolis while alleviating taxes on local businesses and investing that back into our community. And as, uh, my previous co-host Peggy Sue would want me to ask, uh, what is the mechanism to do that on the city level?
Yeah, so for me, that that statement is also just like a broad stroke. And there's ways that we need to implement that. I think one thing I really wanna do again is start working with our state partners to start pushing that, I got a state level, and figuring out how we can do that. I think what that also means is making sure that our tax code changes at the state level and making sure that the people that are earning the most actually pay their fair share. I think there's ways we can focus on that at the city level that I'm gonna be exploring. But for me, when I talk about that on my website, is working with our state partners to make sure that, uh, we can actually do that statewide. And obviously at the city level, it will help our our, us municipally as well.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's talk about SROs. Uh, do you, single-room occupancy, which is, uh, for our listeners, is a housing unit, often a house with private rooms and shared kitchen and bathroom facilities. Is that a type of housing that you would support legalizing in Minneapolis?
Yep, I would, and I know it's already in the works at the city council, so.
Right, and I, I have a follow-up on what the city council is doing, because they're considering a version of that that would limit, uh, the operators to government entities and nonprofits, which would pretty, pretty significant restriction. Is that, it looks like it might pass, but is that something you would support or would you support going further?
Sorry, can you say that again, John?
Yeah, sure. Uh, the proposal that's in front of the city council on it, I kind of suspect this is what they might end up going with. I, it's still open to change, but it might pass. Uh, limits operators of SROs or rooming houses only to government entities or nonprofits. Is that, and the reasoning for that was they're gonna do a slow rollout, see how it works, and it leaves room to expand it later. But the the counterpoint is, we have, we have a homelessness crisis now, that needs to be addressed now. And so if you believe this is an affordable housing type that would help to address that, why not do it quicker? So I was wondering where you stand on that question.
Yeah, so I think it's an option or a toolbox that we can use and it won't solve everything, but I think the faster we can get it done, the better, so.
So you would, you would support a more expansive, uh, SRO legalization beyond just government entities and nonprofits?
Yeah. And also back on that, I think what was happening, uh, was it two weeks ago? I think there was a conversation with the city council that was just making it to certain wards, maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, yeah, you're you're right about that. The planning, the Planning Commission was considering, so there were three proposed amendments to what staff had proposed from Planning Commissioner. Uh, one was about the limitation to uh, residential districts above R one and R two, and R one and R two are the lowest density, you know, historically like single-family neighborhoods, those type neighborhoods, so it would have prohibited uh, rooming houses in those districts, so that, so where do you, where do you stand on that one?
Yeah, so I mean, I wanna make sure we can build it all over, not just in specific, not just in our ward, not just in Ward five, not just in Ward.
Okay, so, thanks for, thanks for bringing that up. You asked your own gotcha question.
Yeah.
So, A- Alyssa, did you find your notes?
I did find my notes. I think we asked all, you asked all the other questions that I didn't ask, so.
We should ask about housing. Uh, you know, there's a lot of issues that arise from housing. Uh, there's climate, there's affordability, there's concerns about displacement. I am someone who believes we are better off in Minneapolis building more housing of all types at all income levels. We're better off having built thousands of housing units than not having built them. But there's also things that that does not solve. It it doesn't solve homelessness, the immediate needs there. So I'm wondering how you balance all those things, uh, protecting tenants and making space for people who want to live in Minneapolis. And I think it's a good thing that people wanna live in Minneapolis. How do you, what is your housing philosophy when it comes to that?
Yeah, so before I even get into my answer on that, uh, the ninth ward has had a lot of encampments. And all we do is continue to criminalize the people in the encampments, continue to take their belongings and bulldoze their their homes, right? So while building more housing, specifically income-based housing in the entire city of Minneapolis is important. I also know that an important thing in my ward and in my community is making sure we're helping our unhoused community and getting to the root cause of how we do that. And building more income-based housing does help that, but it doesn't solve that issue, uh, completely. And it doesn't necessarily help what's happening in my ward right now. So a lot of my focus goes specifically to the fifty percent, fif- over fifty percent renters that are in my ward. Or the unhoused community that continues to be ignored in our ward. And obviously the affordability price of o- of housing and that is displacing a lot of people in our ward. So I do, I do, I agree, building more housing does help. Having a diversified option of housing does help our ward, but also making sure we're getting to help our unhoused community is gonna be one of our biggest, uh, priorities in our ward. And that needs a lot of dedication and time to support our unhoused neighbors, so.
So what what do we need to be doing on homelessness that we're not doing right now?
Yeah, so we need to start pushing more housing-first initiatives and actually, uh, not sending police response to these encampments that continue to terrorize our community and continue to enact more pain into these encampments, but instead actually working with our county and city staff to actually adequately staff these encampments and figure out how we move these people into permanent housing and these commu- sorry, these community members into permanent housing. Uh, and making sure that we do provide those housing-first policies that help people get into homes and help them with employment opportunities, mental health support, addiction, and anything else that they may need. And and helping them along the way and knowing that it's not gonna be an easy task, but making sure we can do that.
Okay, is there anything we didn't cover, either Jason or Alyssa?
I now have a follow-up housing question.
Okay, go, do it.
Um, I'm just curious who, so one of the things that I hear, housing is an area where I like, I personally have a lot to learn, so, um, but one of the things that I've heard over and over again is like the city doesn't have the resources to solve this problem on its own. Um, who do you think primary partners are and like where would you go to to start solving those, like, a problem that is apparently too big for our city budget?
Yeah, I think, again, I work for the state government, I know the finger game. And I know how often the way you get out of a situation is by saying, that's the state's problem, that's the federal's problem, that's the park board's problem apparently. And, you know, you point fingers to different forms of government, but in reality is that you all need a partnership with each other to actually get this work done. And what I haven't seen right now, maybe y'all can correct me if I'm wrong, is actually a group of people from the county, the park board, the state legislature, the federal government, and the city council from, I I mean, I know that's what I'm gonna do right away as a city council member in ninth ward, is bring all the people that actually have the power to pass policy to address the issue here that's happening in the ninth ward and actually do things together. Instead of finger pointing each other and saying they're not doing their job right, because the city of Minneapolis does have the resources, we just aren't willing to do the work. And we don't have people that are willing to actually do things to support our unhoused communities. Doing the work also means actually talking to the people on the ground and working really, really hard next to the community that has been helping our unhoused neighbors and supporting them any way that we can to actually make the place safe, but also make it humane. And that's not what's happening. Instead, we're just saying that these people are bad and we're gonna bulldoze their their tents and we're gonna send them to a different ward and and that's not okay. So I, I don't know if that answered your question, I know it was nuanced, but basically, we do have the resources, we just don't have the political will to do it. And we also need to work with our Hennepin County, uh, specifically, cause I know they do a lot of work with our unhoused residents and wanna partner with them specifically, cause they're always underground, uh, doing less harm with them.
Okay, we're gonna have to close out the show because Jason has been very generous with his time and has to go immediately. So this, our guest has been Jason Chavez, running for city council in Ward nine. Thank you, Jason, and Alyssa, please stay for the the post-show, okay?
We have post-show now? I thought there was only pre-show.
There's gonna be a post-show now.
It was really nice to see you, Jason. Thanks again.
Good to see you, Alyssa, and thank you so much, um, John, and and I appreciate that y'all were willing to like wait for me when my computer was being weird and.
Of course.
But appreciate it.
Thank you for fixing it, because you sound great.
Oh, no, someone, uh, uh, someone in my campaign team brought me a laptop, so.
Yeah.
They're very, very quick.
Yeah, give them a raise. Yeah, I I just decided it's spur of the moment to do post-show, I don't know why. I don't even know what we have to talk about anymore. I think, I think I wanted to like make a joke about Mickey Moore. But I didn't.
No. I mean, make as many Mickey Moore jokes as you like. I'm not good at telling jokes, but I will appreciate your jokes.
I don't have any Mickey Moore jokes. I feel like just saying Mickey Moore's makes people laugh, so I wanted to do that, but I didn't get it.
It does remind me a lot of Mickey Mouse.
Yeah. Also, his name is Michael Moore, yeah.
No.
Why not, why not just go with Michael Moore?
Well, cause aren't there like a million other people named Michael Moore?
I mean, there's a million other people named John Edwards. I, it didn't stop me.
Didn't decide to go by Johnny?
Uh, well, eh, there are people who call me that, uh, my mom, uh, used to, doesn't anymore.
When is your mom coming on the podcast?
Uh, we don't bring family members on the podcast. Expose my mom to hate on the internet. Not doing that to my mom. Do you have any Mickey Moore stories? As somebody who's lived through this year in Ward nine, I imagine the most traumatic thing you've experienced is the Mickey Moore campaign.
The most dramatic thing I've experienced?
No, 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 I'm saying the most traumatic thing you've experienced in Ward nine over the past year has probably been the Mickey Moore campaign, and this is where you laugh at my joke.
Okay. Uh, yeah, it, well, there's just, there's so much to not laugh about that happened in Ward nine last year, so.
Right, but Mickey Moore. Do you have any, do you have any remembrances? This is how I wanted to close out. This is the whole reason I wanted to have a post-show, was to get your remembrances of Mickey Moore and his campaign. Do you have any? Maybe you don't, I.
I mean, he's been on like every, you know, Ward nine, oh, now I'm gonna blank on the word, what do you call it when a bunch of candidates get together and they're on a panel, I guess? It's been on every one of those and at the. Been on every one of those and at the end of it, I'm just always left with the impression that he like didn't say anything. He said no things. He talked for ten minutes and said no things.
Right, yeah. He's, he gives a pretty good, uh, presentation though, like he can speak confidently and at length, but not say anything, right?
Is that a good presentation? I would rank that very poor. Zero, zero of ten.
Well, I mean, like the, uh, the, I don't know, stylistically, but not substantively.
Yeah.
He, he does better, better than you'd think.
He does put like big campaign propaganda stuff behind him on the video. You can always see like his, all of his campaign stuff, so.
He, he also has a, like a very professional PR person who sends me press releases and it like addresses me by name. It's not one of those BCC operations. It's like, John, here is the latest Mickey Moore press release. I hope you find it satisfactory. Please contact us if you have any questions. It's very polite. I'm very impressed. I don't know if Mickey Moore is paying, paying a lot for the service, but it's impressive.
I mean, I, did you know that Mickey Moore has owned a business? He's probably paying for the service.
He's the, I think he's like the hair braiding king of Minnesota. Is that what he calls himself? Or did he, he invented the hair braiding industry in Minnesota? I forget what the, what the, his brag is about the hair braiding.
We don't need to repeat what Mickey Moore's brags are. I keep almost calling him Mickey Mouse now. It's very hard.
I think we've, we've probably doubled what his eventual percentage will be in, in November, just by talking about him. Here on the podcast. What do you think?
I hope not.
Okay, well, if you don't have anything more to say, I think we can end on the Mickey Moore note. I will put, put in the description of the show that we talked at the end about Mickey Moore. That's a way to get people to listen to the end, I think.
That sounds fun. So, uh, I'm gonna have to email Jason though and ask him what his favorite bus route was. We didn't ask.
Oh, yeah, I, I imagine he would have said the twenty-one.
He did mention the twenty-one by, by number. I was gonna say by name.
Yeah, he brought up bus, bus routes by himself. So if you, do you have any parting thoughts for our audience?
I hope it's not this hot next week or whenever, whatever week this podcast gets released. It is muggy and terrible out there. Stay cool, folks.
Would you come back and do this again? Or is this stressful for you? I'm just wondering.
I mean, I got to the end of the last podcast episode and was like, I literally have no idea what I just said for the last hour, so I guess it, but it's fun. It's good.
You.
I'll come back.
Coherent. Okay, great. You wanna do candidate stuff or you just wanna like bullshit about transportation?
I will not, uh, take offense that you characterized my last conversation as bullshit about transportation, um.
No, I mean, we, we had to stretch for time early in the show. That's what we did.
Yeah, uh, you let me know. What's in, what's in the wedge line?
I'll take that as a no. Okay, this is, this has been the Wedge Live Podcast. My co-host has been Alyssa Shuffman. I'm your host, John Edwards, and this is the end of the show.